Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020, meeting of the Long Metal School Committee. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. School committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming the meeting on Channel 12, and a recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible after the meeting. Right now, uh, in, uh, since we are absent from our flag in the school committee room, uh, I would instead observe a moment of silence, uh, recalling the times that we're in, uh, and, 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 uh, and hoping for, for peace and justice. Thank you. Um, tonight on the first part of our agenda, we are going directly into executive session. There is a motion. I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with bargaining with the Assistant Superintendent's and Pupil Service Director, and Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings, to reconvene into open session. Is, uh, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and second. Any further discussion? See, none. I'll repeat the motion. I, the, uh, motion is that the school committee will meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, 30A, Section 21A, Purpose to conduct a strategy session in preparation with bargaining with the Assistant Superintendent's and the Pupil Service Director, and Purpose 7, consideration or release executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session. This motion requires a roll call vote. Bronwyn?
Yes.
Uh, Gianna?
Aye.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Armin, yes. Did I miss anybody? Nope, I'm missing Ryan for now. All right, we are, uh, now in executive session. Brian Tracy will contact you when we're coming back in. Armin, same thing? Good evening and welcome back to the Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020, meeting of the Long Metal School Committee. We are returning from an executive session. I now call the meeting back to order in open session. Brian, we have correspondence?
Yes, we do. We have an email from Ms. Heather LaPorte, received on May 18, 2020, regarding a source for sanitizer hand masks. An emailed letter from Ms. Kristin Newmark, received on May 20, 2020, regarding remote learning and ideas for planning for a new normal as the district prepares to real.
Thanks. We have minutes for approval? Is there a motion?
Move that the school committee approve the minutes for the May 19th, 2020, school committee meeting as presented.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? See, none. I will call for a vote. Brian?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Armin, yes. Uh, are there any visitor comments? Okay. Are there any school committee announcements or recognitions? Okay, no business. Oh, Ryan?
Uh, just to say again, I've been complimenting the high schools, uh, admin a few times and say again, appreciate as a senior parent seeing the, although, virtual award ceremony. Um, that was nice and appreciate all the effort that those folks are doing. I know it's been very difficult.
Awesome. All right, no business with guests. Administrator reports, uh, Dr. O'Shea.
We're just, uh, update you on a call that we, a statewide call that we had with the Commissioner of Education today. Um, we're anticipating that the guidance on next year will come out. Um, they're saying the week of June 15th, which might mean, in state government terms, early July. Um, you know, we're hoping, we're hoping that that is the case. Uh, we're anxious just to get planning on next year. Uh, the, I may have mentioned that the, uh, Commissioner has said previously and reinforced today that, uh, we can anticipate that the state will be much more prescriptive, uh, in terms of what type of, um, model we will use for scheduling students. What my best guess is would be that we're looking at some type of hybrid arrangement and, um, if I had to guess beyond that, again, these are, you know, no crystal ball here, but my best guess based on some of the tea leaves that have been floated out there is that we would be looking at a, uh, sort of week on, week off scenario where, um, the student population would be cut in half and half of our students would be with us for a week and half of, would be, um, with us on the alternating week and, um, so I'll get that information out to the public generally in a, in a more pointed way. Um, when we get some greater specificity. But I would say again, if, if anybody's watching for the first time, you know, next, next year, I think we can anticipate, um, much tighter, um, as I've said, uh, time on teaching requirements, much tighter time on learning requirements. We can anticipate that there'll be more direct, live engagement, uh, between staff and students. And then we've also begun discussions around how we can move towards more, um, consistency with the remote learning tools and the learning platforms that we use. So, those are the things that, um, right now, I expect that, uh, families can anticipate. The other, um, the other moving part here is summer programming. Uh, uh, we, right now, uh, People Service Director Jean Fontaine is planning for a, um, in-person program for some of our most vulnerable students. And, um, right now, it appears that, uh, the state guidance is opening for that. They're opening the door to allow that to happen. Uh, we're gonna need some additional clarification on that and get some specific guidance. So, we're expecting specific guidance on summer programming, uh, as early as, uh, Wednesday or Thursday. So, we'll keep you posted on that. Um, and then, uh, you know, it definitely is worth noting, uh, the, um, response that I've seen in this community to the really tragic and senseless death of George Floyd. Um, our, our, it was a situation that really understandably, um, agitated, um, and, and deeply affected and saddened our students. Uh, and, and many, they participated in a very peaceful, uh, protest on the town green and close to the, uh, town offices. And so, we're proud of the way they, uh, comported themselves. And I think they, they brought a, an important message of peace and justice. And I'd wanna, um, hit again that we are, um, we've begun a two-year partnership, uh, with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity, and it's gonna be an opportunity for us to really do, uh, uh, have a deep, important, critical conversation with, um, all stakeholders in this community. Uh, the plan was to do that this spring, where we were planning to engage, um, stakeholder groups, student groups, uh, parent groups, staff groups, administrative groups, and, and some, again, those critical conversations relating to, uh, racism and, um, pervasive inequity. Uh, we got to put those on hold until the fall. So, the plan is to, uh, begin that work. All the planning has been done or is in, is being done, but the plan is to begin those, uh, sort of critical stakeholder conversations in the fall. Now, again, that's with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity. It's a, I'd say it's a major initiative of ours and, and, um, it's something that we had, um, really identified as being important to this community based on some feedback that we got last year. If you recall, we ran, um, some community conversation events and, uh, they were very well and their parents showed up and, and the message to us was loud and clear that, that this community needed to dive into that conversation. So, that was really the genesis of our, our, um, the beginning of our work with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity. So, we're really anxious to dive into that and, and, you know, create the space for the conversation because I, I think, um, Long Metal, like many, many communities, is desperately in need of that. And so, um, you know, even now in this remote learning period, uh, so many of our educators, I've seen emails, um, coming across our desk all day today, yesterday, Monday, uh, on, um, how they can engage all learners in developmentally appropriate ways in, in this critical conversation. So, I can assure you that's happening and it's, it's on the minds of our educators and it's definitely on the minds of our, our students. So, um, I appreciate the way, uh, the high school administration has hit a few sad incidents head-on. Um, and they're working with, um, you know, they're, they're great about, um, working with the Long Metal Police and other community partners. Anytime they are notified of, of, um, hate-filled speech or, uh, other forms of bigotry and racism. So, um, I appreciate the, the engagement of our kids, the engagement of our staff in, in this really, you know, critical sort of what is now a global issue. So, that's all I got and, uh, we'll, we'll hit a few other things during the budget report.
Any questions or comments from Marty? All right. Armin, you got a report?
Yeah, I also wanted to talk about the, uh, protest today that Dr. O'Shea talked about. Um, it was great to see hundreds of my fellow LHS students, uh, protesting safely today at the community house. And I think that it's great that we have a district that really encourages students to speak up about social change and, uh, what they believe in. And I think that we actively teach about, uh, racism and social change in the classroom. But to really see that, um, come out today, I think it, it was a really big win for the district and really great to see that from students.
Well said, Armin.
Thank you.
Very good. Any questions for Armin? All right. Uh, do we have any other reports? LPBC?
Last time I mentioned that we had offered the position, um, I don't think I named the individual. We offered the Executive Director position to Roland Joyo. And we are currently in contract negotiations with him. Um, our next meeting is Wednesday, June 17th, and hopefully things will be, uh, wrapped up by then. The start date for the new position is July 1st. In addition to that, um, and Marty and Tom can maybe speak to this too if they want, the, um, LPBC did cut their budget, um, which was something that all the districts were really happy about because the initial budget, uh, wasn't indicating that. So, they went back to revisit it and did make some, some cuts.
Okay. Um, I would just say that, you know, I've known the Joyo family forever. Um, it's a great family of educators who, uh, you know, he's got brothers, sisters, father, all, you know, come from a long line of educators and administration. And, you know, I, I think that's a, a great, great choice for the, the collaborative, um, especially given, um, you know, some of the conversations we've had recently, uh, I think Roland, uh, will bring, uh, bring a, a great, uh, affect to that, to that community and the collaborative. So, you guys, well done, Bronwyn.
Yeah, we're very, uh, excited. It was unanimous amongst all the districts, a seven-zero vote to, uh, select Roland. So, everyone's super excited. Thanks.
Yes. All right. Uh, Kevin, anything on energy and sustainability?
Nope.
Okay. Um, open space, anything, Jamie?
Nothing, Armin.
Okay. And Marty, I've seen that you've been sending out the, uh, plans for Laurel and Bliss Park. So, thanks for, uh, getting that out to the community. Um, all right, finance sub met yesterday. Um, Tom?
Um, sure, there are a number of items on tonight's agenda for school committee consideration. Uh, there are just a couple of items that I informed finance sub about that I just wanted to make the school committee aware of. Uh, the first is, uh, refunds for bus transportation fees for this school year. We'll, uh, we'll be issuing those refunds in the next couple of weeks. It, uh, is based on a proration of the year. So, uh, the number of days that school was in session and a refund for the, the days in which we've been closed. So, families who paid the full amount for a student will receive about, uh, eighty-three dollars, uh, refund back to them in the next couple of weeks. Uh, and the second item is in regards to extracurricular stipend payments for staff. We, uh, we worked through the LEA and the principals to come up with a, a system to compensate staff for the work that they did relative to extracurricular programs through, uh, through the year. So, it's broken into two payments. One in the middle of winter and then the second is usually the beginning of June. And, uh, what it worked out to be is any stipend or, uh, program that did not continue program that did not continue to operate in a, once schools went to remote learning, we agreed to compensate seventy percent of the stipend. For those that continued on, but were not able to complete their entire activities that were expected for the year will receive eighty-two percent. And then those that were able to accomplish all of their expected activities will receive a hundred percent. And the second payment will be going out this week for staff. So again, it's, it's based on input from the advisors in terms of what activities they were able to remove, to switch over to some sort of remote activity to engage with students and keep them active in in the various after-school or extracurricular programs that we offer. Regards to the, the agenda tonight, there is a, a unitary budget report included in your packet for your review. Again, as we progress through the end of the fiscal year on June thirtieth, I like to provide more frequent updates about where we're going and where we anticipate the, our budget to be in terms of remaining resources. So. You have that document tonight for your review. Finance sub did review it. Again, I, I would say it's a fluid document. The numbers continue to change as things progress, as we continue to clean up encumbrances and we've now had taken some steps in regards to personnel. So this report would update those actions. And we'll probably, probably issue another one in about two or three weeks just to kinda, once the last payroll is processed on June seventeenth. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or you can feel free to reach out to me and let me know.
Any questions for Tom? Tom, the only question I had was on the buses. Since we weren't getting a refund from LPBC on the buses, was there any kind of consideration about like the effect of the refund or does that small amount that we got back from LPBC kinda equal the same amount as the, the bus refunds?
Yeah, so the refund in total will be about eighteen thousand, just under nineteen thousand dollars. If you recall last meeting, the credit that we applied was just about twenty thousand. Basically a wash in terms of the amount that we'll be giving back. Although the refund, the revenue will be coming out of our revolving account where we deposit the fees for transportation. Not necessarily the general fund. So we might have to move some of the expenditures around to offset the refund coming back out of the revolving account.
Okay.
It's about, it's, it's about the same exact amount. The next item is some budget transfers for your consideration. The first one would be request to do a line item transfers in the general fund. There's about two and a half pages worth of transfers. And this would be an attempt to try to clean up some of the line items that have deficit balances based on numerous things that have occurred throughout the year, whether it be staffing changes and salary lanes, programmatic changes, or just purchasing items above what we expected, including moving funds related to the authorization for the Chromebooks that the school committee authorized a few meetings ago. So this would be the second transfer for the general fund tonight. And then there is also one transfer for our grants and special revenues. There are three grants that are affected. It is recognizing some some funds that we would be receiving for the Stars Grant. So Blueberry and Williams both were awarded a state grant totaling sixty-three hundred dollars, four thousand six hundred of Blueberry, one thousand seven hundred at Williams. I've been told that they've been able to convert the activities that were intended with these funds to a virtual opportunity for students. So we will be paying out related expenses to those programs. And then the other large amount is related to the drug-free community grant. There's a fourteen thousand, three hundred dollar recognition. And it's really from carryover from unspent funds from the FY nineteen fiscal year that the grant allows to roll over the course of the five years from year to year. So it would increase the total appropriation in FY twenty up to a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and three dollars. And then there's a slight adjustment to the Medco grant moving three thousand dollars from the supplies that we would have incurred expenses for through the end of the school year, but with the unforeseen closing, we weren't able to purchase supplies. So we're moving it into contractual expenses that we'll be able to spend out by June thirtieth. The Medco grant does not allow for carryover, so we have to expend all of the funds that were awarded. Not like the federal grants where they provided carryover into FY twenty-one of unspent funds. So again, I know there's some motions that would be needed, but I'm happy to answer any questions in regards to either set of transfers.
Ryan?
This type of thing is normal for us at the end of the year, correct?
It is normal, not only at the end, Ryan, but throughout the year. This would be our third revisions to our grants and special revenues. Our second revision to the general fund. And that would be, I would say, another round of transfers once the fiscal year, all the activity for the general fund for FY twenty is recorded. So yes.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, there's a motion on the budget transfer number two.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved the budget transfers as presented in the document titled FY twenty. Budget transfers number two dated June first, twenty twenty.
Motion, is there a second? Motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, called for a vote. Bronwyn? Bronwyn, you gotta go on off mute.
Yes.
Chiana?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Armin, yes. There's another motion for grants and special revenues?
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved the budget revisions as presented in a document titled FY twenty Grants and Special Revenues Budget Revision dated June first, twenty twenty.
Motion, is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Motion, second. Motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Bronwyn?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Armin, yes. Okay. Tom, are we moving now onto the end of year purchases?
Yeah, so the next item there was on finance sub, we provided a, a list of some texts for consideration to use some funds in FY twenty to make some purchases. I believe there is a couple of documents included in the school committee packet in regards to the list of items, the list of texts. There's some high school related text and some middle school world geography and ancient civilization texts for grade six and seven. So I'm not sure if you or Marty wanna speak to it.
I'll start. Good evening, everybody. I want to start by introducing you to Will Sullivan. For those of you who don't know, I think he just joined us. Marty, did you let him in? Will is doing some internship hours for admin. He started his doctorate recently. So he's been working with us on the social studies vote in particular because his other job is a statistics teacher heading grade over at Williams. So. He's gonna do the, the presentation for, or at least part of it for the world geography and ancient stuff towards the end. But the the top portion is easier, so I'll take that portion. And these are textbooks, as we've done over the past several years, we've been able to use some end-of-year funds to update some of our texts, our curriculum coordinators and department chairs. Take a look every year at their texts and not necessarily their oldest texts, but often it is. And I think fair to say when I first came into this position, we had some super old texts and we've been updating them annually now for probably five or six years. So this is a result of that. There are some math texts, three math texts and one science text that the high school department chairs are requesting. I don't wanna read it word for word for you, but all of the texts that are being replaced are over ten years old. If they are AP texts, the AP organization wants us to be using texts that are ten years or less. So we're out of compliance when we use books that are older than ten years. And so, so that's the story on the top textbook. Any questions in particular related to the?
Marty, were you saying something?
Alright, I'm sorry. I think Sue asked a better question. Are there any questions? And I was gonna, let me know when you want me to pull up the social studies slide deck.
Okay, thanks.
Gianna?
I'm not sure if this is the right time or place to ask it, but if we're, you know, with the way things are going and if we're talking about online learning and technology and, and, you know, resources online. Like, should the money that we're thinking about spending on hardcover books that are just gonna get out of date relatively soon again anyway, should we be thinking about spending the money on online resources that can continually be updated because they're online?
So all of the texts here tonight do have a digital subscription for six years. It comes together. The textbook companies have figured out that you can't sell one without the other. So they've bundled them for the best price. It's like your cable and phone and Wi-Fi TV in the same or Wi-Fi in the same. So these are all text bundles that you're looking at and they do come with a six-year subscription, Gianna, digital.
And so that means like
For the next six years, right. And the digital content can be updated and but in six years from now, we have to look again at renewing the subscription.
But the, the price you're talking about includes what you're saying in terms of
Four, I'm sorry, yes, six years, yeah.
And Sue, it's not like a Kindle book where the online content is substantially cheaper than the, than the physical content, correct? Or can you tell us what the difference in cost might be?
Ooh, I don't have the difference in cost. They don't quote it like that, but typically when we're, when we're asking for just a hardcover or just a digital, it's literally dollars difference to buy one or two.
Ryan, you had your hand up.
Definitely get that, get that you want.
Something I mentioned in the finance sub, but I'm gonna ask again here is the, the, similar to what Gianna was talking about with the open source content. My request and hope is that the teachers in the district can look into creating our own resources instead of us having to buy texts every five years, six years. So obviously that's a big undertaking. So the idea that we're getting them now would give them maybe a six-year head start in thinking about it and coming up with creating their own units and coming up with the right resources that match what the state puts out. Rather than going along with what, whatever company sends the best version of the curriculum. So. It's just a topic we talked about last night, looking at open sources and I'm just bringing it up again.
Yeah, I can say, Ryan, that, that the open source for me has been a, a long topic that I have, you know, consistently brought up and something that's, you know, especially for something like social studies, which doesn't have an MCAS component for a written test and, you know, the with social studies, just the content changing constantly based upon, you know, civics and, and everything else. Now, I, I think that we need to be prepared to talk about, you know, what kind of stipend is there to develop that, which would probably offset the cost of expensive textbooks in, in the long run. But, you know, I agree with, totally agree with you.
I gave you credit when we spoke last night.
That's okay. Suzie?
I, I just concur with that. I think that's, that's a, that's a really good way to go and, and Sue's right, like, you know, textbook companies, this is what they do. It's unfortunately their way of making money and, you know, they put a lot of strain and stress on the budgets of, of, of school districts. You, you know, even if you just want the digital version, you know, it, it does end up being cheaper to get the book. But then you've got books that you feel obligated to replace and there's this for all intents and purposes, it's a racket and they know they've got the school districts where they want. And so, yeah, I, I agree with you. If we can start moving down the road of building our own resources, set of resources, that would be obviously better than, than this.
So I think we had social studies, K, K through three at least, considering that next year. Open source and developing their own. And they're all using, you know, supplemental, open source materials, but haven't totally jumped ship yet. We'll try.
Alright, Sue, you, oh, Bronwyn, sorry.
I was just wondering if three through twelve, that was something that they were open to considering in the future.
I, I didn't hear you at the first part, Bronwyn, sorry.
I was wondering if grades like, I guess, four through twelve for social studies, if that's something they would consider.
Well, we're, we're pretty up to date on social studies, while depending on how it goes with our sixth and sevens, but we're pretty up to date from sixth grade through twelfth grade, even our electives. But K through five are looking now, a goodly amount. But yes, they are definitely open to it. I think they were leaning that way prior to our closing down, so.
Leaning to
Leaning towards open source at that, at the early elementary.
But not past that?
Well, I don't think we're gonna need anything new in social studies for quite a while now, six years at least.
Well, just what Ryan was mentioning, that it's, it takes a while. So it would be probably great if this would, maybe there wouldn't be a ton of future textbook purchases if the open source is available. I just think that's something the whole committee seems to support from our past discussions. But I was just wondering what your feeling was on that and, you know, from talking to the teachers.
We, when we were looking at math texts a few years ago, we were strongly considering Engage New York, which is an open source text. It's a huge mindset shift. I think colleges have kind of made that jump, but I think we're still concerned about, you know, who's offering these texts, whether the validity of them. Will they be there tomorrow? You know, they're online now. Could they be pulled down? So I think we have, we have some hurdles to, to jump through at public school and, and these grades that kind of need to be fixed before someone will, you know, engage enough and, and put their trust in a fully, you know, open source text. That's my honest opinion.
Evan?
Sue, I, I would love it if you could just, you know, just poll the, the faculty and see if there are people who wanna pilot this stuff. I mean, that's what we do at Smith. If people wanna give it a shot, there, you know, some early adopters, let them try it. And then they can report back. I don't think it's gotta be a wholesale shift of everybody in certain grades. I think just, you know, encourage the early adopters and then see what we can learn.
Yeah, right. Let them infiltrate the rest. That, that's a great idea. But we have tried it. We've tried Engage New York and a couple of other things that have been piloted and, you know, they're just so used to making copies and so that one of the nice things I've heard come out of this, about remote learning, is that people have learned to turn things into PDFs and they use Kami to turn them back. If anything, if anything is good about it, it's that. And hopefully next year, Tom Azza will use less copied paper. He's not listening to me.
Marty, you had your hand up?
I'm good. The, the point was picked up, so.
Okay. Will, you gonna take us through the social studies?
I will, yeah. So.
Well, let me, hold on one sec. Will, let me jump in and I'll clear the screen and, and pull up your slide deck.
Thanks.
And perhaps, not to put any pressure on you, Will, with your first public presentation here to the school committee, but if if you have any thoughts as a, as a young, active teacher who is current on the latest technologies and curriculum movements, we, we welcome any comments you had on the open source possibilities as well. So. Alright, oop, wait a second. And tell me if that is visible to all. Is that okay?
Yep.
Thank you, Ryan.
All right, so the open source is still something that I'm trying to get used to as well. In my four years, I've only ever had the textbooks, the one for the first three years and the new one the last year. But I'm definitely willing to try. I love the idea of having some faculty kind of try it out, and I would be definitely willing to try it out, to gauge how it would work in a civics classroom. So this is for the sixth and seventh grade textbooks for the new social studies standards. So the process that we followed, the committee followed, we first took a good look at the standards. The shift, they shifted slightly for sixth and seventh grade. The big difference, one big difference is that it says in the standards, I think it's on page eighty-three, that the middle school, sixth and seventh grade get to sort of decide and determine which region of the world is taught in which grade. It's kind of up to the school's discretion. So the first thing the committee did is sort of decide which region of the world is going to be taught in which grade, which then sort of guided their process in determining which books, textbooks would line up with that scope and sequence that they determined for the regions of the world. We did, the committee did reach out to some other districts in the state, but they didn't really hear much back from them.
PowerPoint had a mind of its own here. I'm sorry if I'm going. I didn't mean to move it on on you there, Will, so.
No, no worries, no worries. So they reached out to, the committee reached out to a few different companies and received both hard copy textbooks and access to the online platforms. The first thing that they did after kind of determining which standards would be taught in which grade, they evaluated each textbook to see if it met every single standard. And there were two textbooks that sort of rose above, two different companies that rose above the rest in regards to the standards, including all of the standards in detail. So with those two textbooks, the two textbooks, sort of McGraw-Hill and the Hooten Mifflin, we did a unit that focused on the, for the sixth grade, the ancient Egyptians and the Hebrews, and the seventh grade was India and China. And in that unit, students used both of the textbooks to learn about the content and then took a short, sort of assessment, informal assessment to determine which textbook was the most supportive for the students in understanding the material. The committee elicited feedback from students about the content, the accessibility, the supportiveness, the aesthetics of the book. And then the committee also got feedback from parents, asking them to talk with their students about the textbook that they looked at in class, as well as, last week, there was a link sent out to parents for them to be able to access the online platform. So we involved, the committee involved a wide array of different stakeholders in this process. And then the book that was chosen after all of this was the McGraw-Hill. It aligned with all of the standards extremely well and in detail. During the pilot for the sixth grade, teachers found that students were able to answer on average 2.3 more questions using the McGraw-Hill textbook than the Hooten Mifflin book. So the student comments included that they found it more interactive, more informative, very accessible, that it was, the information was presented in a way that was easy to understand. It wasn't too dense. Teachers loved that it connected so well with the standards, loved the online programming. The book offers reading questions that can sort of help students with comprehension. Teachers enjoyed that. And the online platform and the book itself have access to primary sources that are hard to find otherwise. So it makes teachers investigating certain primary sources a little bit easier. We didn't receive many parent comments. The parent comments that we did receive were all positive for the book. The online platform is a phenomenal, has a phenomenal differentiation tool. Teachers can assign tiered text to specific students. It has online audio capabilities. There's pre-made assessments that match up with the standards in the chapters that are being read. Teachers also can make their own tests, and the test platform has the ability for teachers to include things like a notepad and a highlighting feature, which are good for students to practice because those are some of the tools that would be available on like a standardized test. There's a ton of pre-made lessons that teachers can either assign virtually or print out and make copies of in class, charts and diagrams, reading passages, things like that. Students still commented that they liked the physical textbook. So I think that most of the, I think all of the teachers, Sue, maybe you'll help me out here, said that they just wanted a classroom set of textbooks, not one to bring home to every kid. Right. Eighth grade, the eighth grade last year and used this year, the civics textbook that was designed by the same company. So it's very consistent from grade level to grade level, and this book has been phenomenal for us so far. And sort of an unrelated note to the textbook itself, the people at McGraw-Hill, their customer service is just like second to none. They're extremely like helpful in regards to solving technical online issues. They're helpful in getting back to us with questions or different ways to use the platform. It's been great working with them. So the cost of the books and the online platforms is forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars, sixty-eight cents. And that includes the six-year online subscriptions. There was the focus that I think in, at Williams, there's a larger class coming up, maybe next year, and more subscriptions would be needed to support the larger class and to help out the district. McGraw-Hill was willing to throw in the extra needed subscriptions with the, like, without any additional cost, as well as any more teacher books and teacher licenses. And they also offered to provide professional development for us. And the professional development there is outstanding. We had it early in the year for the civics book, and it was really supportive. They really showed us all of the different capabilities of the online programming. So this book was widely accepted by the committee, the textbook adoption committee. They think it's gonna support all of the students. It's very teacher friendly. It's learner centered. And that's about it. Does anybody have any questions?
Can I just add a couple things?
Of course you can.
Thanks. So we did a pilot this year, and they gave us a ton of free books, even more above and beyond what we have here. So they provided a lot of, well, I'll call it free material for forty-one thousand dollars. But that's been great, and it is a lot of support, so I appreciate it. Yeah. Thanks, Will.
Suzie, you had your hand up?
I did. Thank you for that presentation. I appreciate it. I appreciate all the thought that went into the conversation and the decision. This is, I think, more for Sue, a conversation around, you know, how does this get to the goal of deeper learning for students? You know, I know we're concerned about the Massachusetts framework, but sometimes depth, you have to sacrifice breadth and coverage. And so what level of, like, you know, approach or thinking has gone into, you know, the textbook really isn't the curriculum. The curriculum is dictated by the school and, you know, certainly it's based on the framework. But, you know, we're fortunate in the social studies area that you don't have a test that you have to, you know, align to. But that being said, certainly there's the expectation that there's, you know, addressing certain pieces. But, you know, social studies is a subject where the depth, it just takes you, you can just go so many different directions.
It's a great thought provoking, you know, area. And the nice thing about the textbook is it does have a lot of deeper learning activities that teachers can use if they want to. But they're starting to plan a lot of cross-curriculum units. At Glenbrook, the art teacher and the history teacher get together to do some deeper learning. We'll incorporate this into the scheme program at Williams. So I think a lot of group learning and problem solving, kind of like that living in MBU problem, social, new social problems. So they're pretty excited about that in particular, about launching into the new units. Thank you. Sure.
Sorry, I had to put myself on mute to sneeze. Bronwyn?
We appreciate that. I was wondering, is the curriculum already written for this?
No, not totally. We are, we have a, it's, well, you can speak better to it, but we moved some units around from sixth grade to seventh grade and seventh grade to sixth grade. So there is curriculum that's written, but they're going to go through now and revamp some of those units. Am I saying that right, Will?
Yeah, they wanted to spend, we spent a little bit of time just thinking about how the different regions of the world would stack up sequentially. You know, for example, we wanted to make sure that like the, for the seventh grade, the year ended with Greece and Rome, because that's the first thing that we pick up in eighth grade, how Greece and Rome influenced the United States, like our government. So we wanted to make sure that the units sort of stacked up sequentially and then find a textbook that supported that.
Bronwyn?
I thought typically the curriculum would be written before the purchase of a textbook.
So I think the curriculum was outlined, Bronwyn, prior to, but the units of study or the individual lesson plans have not been written yet. They'll probably use many of the old plans revamped and then start to write some new ones.
Is the new curriculum available?
I think it is in, the scope and sequence is in Atlas. Maybe I'll download that for you, Bronwyn, and send it to you in a PDF document.
That'd be great, thank you.
Suzie, looks like you had your hand up?
Yeah, I guess just going back to my initial question about, you know, the textbook driving. If we don't have a written curriculum, then the textbook, you know, if we're imagining a new curriculum, then it sounds like this is gonna be, I mean, I would just guess that you're gonna implement this next year, that this is gonna be more of the basis of it.
I couldn't hear the other side.
If you haven't, oh, I'm sorry, I might be having some, I've been having internet issues, sorry. I guess, but I'm going back to my initial question, which was, if the textbook is not driving the curriculum, but we don't have a curriculum written, how is the textbook not going to drive the curriculum?
Gotcha, sorry, I hear you. So the scope and sequence was developed before looking at text. We needed that prior to looking at the text. So the scope and sequence of the curriculum is all written out and mapped out. But again, the nitty gritty of individual units hasn't been hammered out yet. Although there are many lessons that will carry over from the prior curriculum with revision.
Any other questions or comments for Sue or Will? All right, seeing none, we do have a motion.
Correct, Tom?
Yeah, I just, I think I want to just provide some clarification that the text that Will and Sue were talking about, it's new, so it needs to be adopted. So we would not, if we're going to vote on using funds, I would say we would probably want to vote on the thirty-one thousand for the high school books. And then in two weeks, once the middle school, the sixth and seventh grade geography and ancient civilization texts are adopted, we can have a motion to approve the funds to make that purchase. So I think if a motion is gonna be made, it would be to authorize the use of thirty-one thousand, fifty-five dollars and twenty-one cents from the FY twenty budget to purchase the high school text as reported.
Sue Bertrand?
Thanks.
And then Marty?
I sent you an email today with a demo link on it to the text for the sixth and seventh, and the book's right behind me in my home office, but I will bring them in and leave them in the school theater if anybody wants to take a look at the hardcover copy, so that you have some time with the content and the layout of the book. And I would encourage you to dig into the resources, the primary resources and things like that that come along with this text. They've done a really nice job.
Marty? Marty, you're on mute.
Sorry, the intent was to have the committee vote on the social studies adoption tonight. It was just to introduce it, and then it would come up at your, that's me.
Okay. All right, Kevin?
And Tom, just to make sure that we're all understanding, the only thing we're talking about purchasing with this motion are the textbooks, not the ones we just had the presentation on, but the other books that were in that handout that Sue provided.
Correct. The top four ones, the high school physics, pre-calc, math, physics, and AP calc.
Okay. All right, so do we have a motion on the thirty-one thousand, fifty-five dollars and twenty-one cents? Did I get that right, Tom?
You did.
I can go for it. I'm gonna be making some of it up because the whole motion is not here, at least not on my screen. I'll go for it. I recommend, I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee, the school committee approve the end-of-year purchase for the textbooks outlined in the handout provided for thirty-one thousand, fifty-five dollars and twenty-one cents?
That's pretty good. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Marty, was that discussion or were you rubbing your nose?
I was getting my nose.
Okay, good. All right. This recall is a roll call. Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jana?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Armin, yes? Okay, thanks, Sue. Thanks, Will.
Thanks, Will.
Thank you.
All right, we don't have a policy sub-report or curriculum sub-report evaluation sub met on Friday, May twenty-ninth. The superintendent's summative evaluation will occur later in the meet. Ongoing business item number twelve, impact of pandemic on FY twenty and FY twenty-one budget. The school committee was asked by the select board for us to reduce our FY twenty-one budget by three hundred and fifty grand. The administration has developed a recommendation. Tom or Marty?
I'll start and then if, and Tom can certainly fill in with the detailed documents that he has included in your packet. So, give me one second here. So as Armin alluded, the revised revenue projections on the town side have required the school department to take a look at its FY twenty-one budget and sort of be responsive to the revised revenue projections. And so recall that the sort of assigned portion of the expenditure reductions that had been identified for the school department was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so as we sort of took on the task of identifying expenses that we could reduce to meet that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar obligation, we went back to the budget targets that we had presented back in January, where we had kind of communicated that at that point, when we're in a place where we could really make some modest investments, we wanted to make those investments with these goals and these targets in mind. And I would say that as we entered the conversation around how we would meet the revised revenue requirement, that we also went back to the That we also went back to these goals. And so the, um, the budget revisions before you. Um, excuse me, I'm just gonna stop this share for a second. I think I shared the wrong file, my apologies. This one has slightly bigger font. So as we work to, uh, work toward that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar total reduction amount. We had quickly come to the conclusion that, given the pandemic that we are in the middle of. That we needed to ensure health and safety above all. And so one of the additional positions that we were looking at. For FY twenty-one was the addition of a one point O full-time equivalent, um, LPN to be stationed at the high school. And we felt that, um, you know, next year, uh, health services will be even more critical and we wanted to maintain that. So that, that position would be maintained in the, and we're recommending that it be maintained in the FY twenty-one budget. Also would remind the committee that we will be in a position to apply CARES Act funding, uh, towards the, toward the COVID. Um, health and safety issues. And so that's something I'm sure that will come up before the committee, uh, in future meetings. Uh, I would reassure the committee that with this recommendation that we are bringing forward. That we would be in a position to, um, ensure that we are being responsive to the enrollment patterns. And, and favorable class size, that, that's been important to Long Meadow. We would be able to maintain the additional section at third grade at Blueberry Hill that was incorporated in the original budget. And the third grade section at Center School that was, uh, recently approved by the school committee as well. And the recommendations, the revised recommendations would also help us respond to that seventh grade enrollment bubble. That we are looking at at Williams Middle School. Uh, so. The, um. Oops, about that. The reductions, uh, where we started was to take a look at. Uh, line items that didn't relate to the direct service of students. And so substitutes, we're, we're forecasting that maybe our substitute needs will be less next year. Legal expenses, custo, summer custodial services, uh, travel and professional development, uh, and then district funded instructional supplies. Tom also identified some savings in computer hardware. The, um, recommendation before you and, and all the, the details of this are in the line item spreadsheet that Tom provided. Uh, this would help us maintain our commitment to the STEAM programming at the middle school. Uh, but, um, unfortunately, we feel that the career education position at Long Meadow High School. That, that's a position that we ought to bring forward as a, as a reduction for you in this revised budget. This proposal would have that, uh, career education position reduced to a, uh, point five FTE. Uh, with a projection to start that position in January twenty twenty-one. Uh, it may, it may work out in that, uh, it's, it's unlikely that we would have many students. Out on internships in the fall of twenty twenty. Uh, it will hamper the start of the program in that we would have liked to have started this in September to do a lot. Around career education, but, uh, we think that if we can get this into the budget at a, at a point five FTE level. That it will give us enough of a foundation to build that career education program that we are hoping to build at Long Meadow High School. Um, unfortunately, the recommendation also would delay the implementation of project-based library services at the elementary level. You'll recall that we had in the original budget, we had hoped to, uh, have one point O library positions at each of the three elementary schools. Uh, this would roll us back to, uh, services, service levels in the nineteen twenties school year. So essentially, uh, rather than, um, the enhancement to library services, which is that we had hoped for. We would be looking at level library services in the coming school year. And then, uh, and Tom can certainly speak to this, um, uh, more precisely than I. But, uh, this recommendation would capture some important special education transportation savings. And then some out of district tuition savings that we have identified as well. To the LPVC's credit, uh, the incorporation of Southwick Tolland, uh, into LPVC busing. Has reduced, uh, overall overhead and, and costs related to transportation. And so we, uh, stand to benefit from that. And so the recommendation before you would incorporate. Uh, the savings that we're seeing from, uh, transportation and, um, also the out of district savings. And then, um, the summary charts that, uh, I've always found to be helpful in terms of conveying the bottom line budget. That you would be asked to vote on, this would revise the general fund increase to five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Over FY twenty, uh, in the, but the overall expenditures, uh, would increase by only three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Over FY twenty. I, I described that as a, a very modest increase and it's especially modest when you stack it up. To the, um, salary obligations, uh, that in the amount of, Tom, I think eight hundred or nine hundred thousand dollars increase over FY twenty. So, um, that's a, that's an important consideration that our overall expenditures, uh, would be up less than one percent. And then finally, I think this is a chart that the, uh, committee had, uh, asked for and had found helpful in the original budget presentation. Um, you'll see that, again, the general fund increase is a, a modest one point five percent. And all funds, the increase is less than one percent. So, um, again, when you compare it to recent history, these are modest increases. And I think they're responsive to the fiscal position that the town, uh, has found itself in, like so many other towns. So for you, that's for your consideration. That's the recommendation for this evening. Uh, and again, uh, Tom's detailed budget sheets, sheets are in your packet and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
So the only thing I'd probably, uh, just remind everybody is that when this budget process starts. And that's back, you know, back in December, late November, December. We are taking a snapshot of projections be, uh, based upon best available information at that time. Um, so we are making projections going forward, much like the, the select board is making projections, uh, as well. Right now about what the, the, the bottom line financial impact is to Long Meadow based upon the, the current, uh, COVID and responses and all of that. So, um, you know, when things, uh, you know, are able to change in the budget, um, it's not exactly apples to apples. From December to now, uh, and the information has been updated. So just so that everybody understands that the ability to take a look at some of these things, the closer we get to next year, the better the information gets. About being able to, to make cuts. Now, I would say these, there are cuts in here that hurt. I mean, believe me, this was not an easy thing. Um, you know, there's just not, you know, and I've had this conversation with other members. From other town boards who, well, it's one percent. Well, let's say what the one percent is. The one percent is a half of a, uh, counselor position that was going to put children into internships. And work with local businesses to get them real world experience. And we're still gonna do that to the best of our ability based upon the, the budget we got. Um, but that wasn't easy, or it's not easy to say we're gonna keep library services level. As opposed to the type of services we were talking about to enable twenty-first century learning skills. As we talk about moving to open source curriculum, we also have to give the children the, the, the skills that they need in order to, to do that. And that starts with some of those library positions. That starts with the internship. That starts with the whole support around deeper learning. So I applaud the administration for taking a long, hard look at the, the budget, for making recommendations that I think. While are, uh, not easy, um, you know, are, are, are reasonable. And, uh, and so I would just say thanks, thanks to Tom, to Marty, uh, and to the rest of the admin for, for, uh, Sue. For doing, for doing what you guys do and, uh, and the cabinet as a whole, even if, can I use that word cabinet still?
Sure.
All right, good. All right.
Just say something about the, this, this, these cuts, they, they might seem easy, but they feel like they are particularly hard this year. Um, I don't know how you guys feel Marty and Tom, but those positions that we, the halftime counselor and the, the librarians. Those were places where we were really looking forward to that, like really rich, deeper learning experience, those hands-on activities and problem solving. And, you know, we don't get to do those to the extent that we really wanted to. So it just, um, i- it might seem easy on paper, but it, it feels really like a step backwards. And we'll, we'll institute the best of our ability with what we have, absolutely. But, um, just trying to let you know kind of how hard it, how hard it was.
Gianna, you had your hand up.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you all for, for working so hard and detailed and, um, all those puzzle pieces. I, I just appreciate you all and, and your efforts. Um, and talking about like projections like Armin was saying, and, and this is pure speculation. But what happens, let's say if, if we are back in school and, and, you know, Gessi and CDC, whoever else says. We're allowed to have, you know, sports competitions, but you have to have, you know, kids six feet apart. Two rows apart on a bus. And so we need extra buses to go to those, and again, this is pure speculation, but, but. Where would the money come from, you know? Where would the money come from if, if that were to be the case?
So I think I would, Tom, uh, you want me to? I would just, I would just say from a historical perspective, um, the select board, I mean, the, the school committee working with the select board. And, and the town and town meeting, when extraordinary events hit, hit the, the, the town. Or, or the schools in particular, I can say in the, the, the way past, like, like when we have shortfalls in special education. Because the costs were higher than they were expected, or we had more out of placement, um, out of district placements. We would go back to town meeting and ask for a revision to the budget at that time for, for those kinds of things. And I would think that if we have COVID-related matters that, that we share with the town. Let's say face masks and shields and plexiglass and whatever it is, I think, A, we would probably have to be dealing with that as we are right now. But as part of a town task force to, to do that and to, you know, leverage the purchasing, uh, power of the, of the town. I also think that there will be CARES specific money, uh, for the schools to take act that, that is not available to the town. That's available to the schools only, um, that would have to go towards those things as well. Uh, and then I think the last thing I would say, Gianna, is what you just, we're just talking about, you can only predict what you have current knowledge of. You can't, we, we can't understand what may or may not happen. And as that information evolves, I think we need to keep open. And I told this to, um, to Marie Angelides. And to Lynn and to, uh, Tom and Marty and Paul Festerzic in a, a message last week. I said, I am hopeful that once I go, that the line of communication remains open, uh, and constant. Um, because I felt like from a school committee perspective, the, um, the three hundred and fifty thousand. Was kind of told to us and to make the cut as opposed to having a collaborative conversation, sit down with the select board. You know, even if it's, you know, one or two of our members and one or two of their members to sit down and, and have that conversation about, you know. What is this impacting? What is it impacting on the other side as opposed to just doing an exercise of, here, we're gonna cut and you're taking seventy percent of the cut. And we're taking thirty percent of the cut. Let's actually talk about those priorities in town, uh, and, and, you know, budget around those priorities. As opposed to, um, as opposed to just having a, a mathematical equation.
Thank you, Armin.
Does that help? Tom, is that, how'd I do?
Good, I don't, Marty, I don't know if you wanna add anything first. I mean, I think, uh, I think there's so many uncertainties. Especially around operations that, you know, we're gonna, we can plan for, uh, what we know as of right now. Uh, transportation, I think, is one of those areas that we will, we will have to be responsive to. In terms of what requirements we have to adhere to come the fall, uh, and be creative with how we try to, how we try to resolve. Uh, those challenges that come up. Uh, having money to throw at a problem isn't always gonna solve it. If the buses aren't available or there's not enough drivers to, 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 to drive the vehicles, uh, we might have to come up with different solutions. So, um, I do agree that, you know, these cuts were challenging to make. Um, I hope there, there won't be another round because the next round will be, have much greater impact. In terms of programs and, and, and staffing possibly. So, um, hopefully the, the revenue picture doesn't, doesn't worsen over time. Uh, or there's additional resources to help us, uh, implement some of the strategies we'll need to reopen in the fall. So, um, hopefully, Gianna, I, I understand your concern. I think we talk about things like that every day without really a lot of guidance yet. Um, so we're hopeful to get something in the near, in the next couple of weeks.
And, and, and thank you for all that. And, and y'all know, not so much a concern. I just sometimes just have no, you know, notion of, of how all those puzzle pieces work. So just thank you for all that.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, there's a motion. Tom, what's the dollar amount?
Um, you would want to vote the budget reflective of the new general front amount.
Right.
Which will be the thirty-five million, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Um, and, you know, you can, you can put the total amount too if you want, um.
That's fine. Does somebody wanna make that motion?
So it's, it's the thirty-seven, seven fifty-seven, two forty-six?
Well, yeah, Suzie, you can say that, uh, and then you can add with a general fund amount of thirty-five.
Got it, and then the thirty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Can everybody hear me okay?
That's fine, yep.
Okay. I move that the school committee approve the revised FY twenty-one school department budget in the amount of thirty-seven. Seven fifty-seven, two forty-six with a general fund. Revenue of thirty-five, six seventy-seven, two sixty-seven. For presentation at the annual town meeting on June twenty-third, twenty twenty.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote. Bronwyn?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Armin, yes. On our docket for tonight, we have school choice. Uh, the school committee, uh, discussed revisiting, uh, the agenda item. There is a possible motion, or there is a motion, sorry.
I move that the school committee approve the opening of an additional five school choice seats in grade nine.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Time for discussion, any discussion? Gianna?
Let's say hypothetically, we got a request for a school choice seat in a different grade level. Did you say we would be able to go back and revisit that and add another seat?
So I would say from a school committee perspective, school committee would, would speak to anything they wanna do. From a, a school choice perspective, it would take a, a vote of the board and a recommendation from the administration. Um, I know we have gotten correspondence, which has not been recorded yet. The issue, there's two issues. One is that there is no way to open up a seat for a specific person. So if a specific person is writing an email to us saying that they are requesting a school choice seat be open. That becomes a lottery seat. And so therefore, if you, even if we were to open up a specific spot in that grade. That person would not be assured of that spot. It would then go into a lottery for everybody who else is in that similar, um, similar, uh, situation. So if there was other families who had slings going into the specific grade that they're requesting, then it becomes a lottery. And there is no guarantee that that would happen. Secondly, um, I think. Then it becomes a lottery and there is no guarantee that that would happen. Secondly, um, I think just to maintain the, uh, the fairness of the system. Me personally, uh, I think that the recommendations for a school choice should, you know, be looked at from a budget. And, um, you know, opportunity perspective for the, the district. Where do we have spots available? Where, you know, where can we be most effective with those? Um, and, you know, responding to individual requests for, for school choice. I don't know if that sets a, a good precedent or not. But, uh, but I think the, the first one is the, for me, the biggest one is that we, we can't create spots for a specific child in the open. In the, uh, school choice program because it would, becomes a lottery spot. Marty, sorry, you had your hand up.
But you, you, uh, you said what I said. I said, I, you know, I think the recommendation, my recommendation would always be. That it needs to be, it goes down programming and enrollment and opportunity. And, and it needs to be kind of a, a dispassionate, um, decision, not based on, uh, any requests. That might be out there because, you know, well, well beyond the request that you receive. There are other emails that we periodically receive. Diane is my point person for school choice, uh, inquiries. And she answers quite a few.
Thank you guys for that, uh, explanation.
Any further discussion?
For a point of, just for a point of information, sorry, Armin, um, is this the same with Metco? Is this the same approach as with the Metco program? So if a family were to ask for their own, you know, the, someone in their, so say another child is already in the district. Through the Metco program, is there, um?
Sibling preference?
Preference given to that family for a sibling to come to them?
Sue?
I'm just curious.
No, there's no sibling preference from Metco.
Wow.
You know, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I, I, we operated under a different set of rules in Connecticut. We were strongly encouraged to take a, a whole family in, uh, with the Hartford Open Choice Program.
Definitely been visited with Metco and, uh, not a go.
Just difference. Thank you. Yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we are going, before we take the vote, I am recusing myself from this vote. I will conduct the vote. But, um, based upon my knowledge of the, the waiting list, there is one person with the last name Ray on that. That is a cousin of mine and there is another one on there who also is a similar cousin. So I'm recusing myself from this vote. Um, Bronwyn, oh, Tom.
Well, I just wanted to add, uh, finance sub did, uh, take this up and they did vote to recommend, uh, the motion. That's on tonight's agenda to increase five, uh, two school choice slots in grade nine for next year.
Okay. Marty?
And, and just for the committee's information, there were, there are currently six students on the waiting list. Is that correct, Anne? Do I have that correct? Okay.
All right. We call for a vote Bronwyn.
Yes.
Gianna.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And I'm recused. All right. Okay, we now have, um, the, what do we have now? Oh, uh, we have our every two week vote. Somebody want to make the motion?
I move that the school committee authorize that for the pay period ending Friday, June fifth, twenty twenty. The district pay all current employees not on leave, that portion of their base pay and the portion of any annual stipend to which they are entitled. Consistent with the effective collective bargaining agreement or individual contract of employment. Or in the case of unrepresented at-will employees who have not been furloughed, the same amount as paid for the week ending May twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Okay, call for a vote Bronwyn.
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Armin, yes. We have a motion on the assistant superintendent contracts.
I move that the school committee approve the employment agreements with Ms. Sue, Susan Bertrand, Assistant Superintendent for Learning. Mr. Thomas Maza, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, as presented and authorize the school committee chair to sign the agreements.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote Bronwyn.
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Armin, yes. Uh, new business fee, um. Actually Marty, before we get to the evaluation, I'm going to bring the other one up to the top on thirteen. Uh, the reopening advisory task force, you need a few members?
I need, I'm hoping for two members of the school committee. Um, our student representative, Armin, has already agreed to serve. And so if there are two members who are interested. I will reach out. I'm anticipating, uh, five or six meetings. Um, and I'm anticipating that the group would review state guidance, review other, um, uh, existing guidelines. And the experience of other, uh, communities, other schools that have reopened. I'm guessing that the committee would, uh, be involved in providing us with some direct feedback, um, on the experience that we're open for, for kids. And then also to get any plans that be developed, uh, in connection with the reopening. And I'm imagining that the task force will be sort of multidisciplinary, that it will engage many stakeholders, students, school committee. The LEA, uh, the administrative team and others and parents. So, so if there are two that are so willing, I'd, I'd appreciate it.
It looks like you got Gianna and Bronwyn like pressing their buzzer like as quick as quick can be. If it was like press, it was like press your luck, that'd been no whammy.
I would have bothered, but if we have two, good.
You sure?
Suzie, I'll defer to you and Bronwyn.
No, 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 I'm good. You know, what I will do, I, I only know because I work with internat- international schools and they've already gone back to school. In some cases, if I, if I have resources, I'll just share them with you.
That's awesome. Okay. All right. Thanks. So we got Bronwyn and we got Gianna. Unless somebody else feels like they really, really want to do it and wants to knock them off.
I'll be in touch.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the superintendent evaluation. Um, Ryan?
Thank you. So, uh, we, we use the same system as last year, but I'm explaining it again for everybody watching. Our scoring system for the, um, professional practice goal, student learning goal and the district improvement goal was one to five. With the possible of do not meet, some progress, significant progress met or exceeded. And on standards one through four, the scoring is one to four possible, unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient or exemplary. The rating that we're giving tonight is an average of the committee member scores and we did rounding when it was necessary. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to read the goal out loud, say the score and then the rating and then give the final rating. So the professional practice goal was to develop my capacity to serve Long Meadow as an innovative leader. Focused on developing a broader renewed and widely shared vision of student success. The average was a three point seven one four, which is a met rating. The student learning goal. Is to lead the district in further developing school learning environments to promote the learning and growth of all students in safe and inclusive environments. The average score there was a four, which is met. The district improvement goals. To foster school cultures that are inclusive of all learners and staff and that support their diverse social and emotional needs. To improve student learning through the differentiation of curriculum and instructional practice. And to provide consistent learning experiences across grade levels in schools through the improved alignment, delivery and assessment of the curriculum. And the average there was four point one four, which is also a met. So met all three of the goals. Standard one, instructional leadership. The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision. And makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. The score was four point oh, uh, sorry, I read the wrong one. The score was three point oh, proficient. Standard two. Management and operations promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient and effective learning environment. Using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing and scheduling. Standard two score was three point five seven, which is exemplary. Standard three, family and community engagement promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff. Through effective partnerships with families, community organizations and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school and the district. The average there was three point oh, proficient. And standard four, professional culture promotes success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective, reflective practice. High expectations and continuous learning for staff. The score there was three point two eight, which is also proficient. So it was met, met and met for the goals, proficient, exemplary, proficient and proficient on the standards, which is an overall of, uh, proficient. Thank you. And thank you for your diligence in getting us your documents. Marty?
Um, just want to note, I, I appreciate the process and, um, I would assure the committee. That the, uh, the recommendations that are incorporated into the summative evaluation. That my intention would be to use those as the basis for, uh, next year's annual plan. And that's something that, um, the evaluation subcommittee and I have discussed. So, thank you.
Okay, there is a motion?
All right, just got there, sorry. I move on the recommendation of the evaluation subcommittee that the school committee approved. The summative unified evaluation of the superintendent as presented and authorized the chair to sign it.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, a call for a vote Bronwyn?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yeah.
Ryan?
Yes.
Armin, yes. A motion to adjourn is now in order.
So moved.
Wait, what was that? Kathy Rosado had her finger up. Marty, you have your hand up.
Before, uh, before we adjourn, um, I wanted to make special note that this is our fearless chair's final meeting.
I was trying to get by that.
We all at the risk of speaking for others, um, but I, I know I can speak for the administrative team. But we, we all appreciate Armin's calm and, and fearless, uh, leadership during, uh, some really challenging times. And so I thank him, uh, for his support, his understanding, his encouragement, the advice and recommendations that, that he's given all of us. And, uh, he is, uh, he's an amazing communicator and, um, and we will miss, uh, his steady hand. But, but I know there's, there's some other great folks waiting in the wings. But, uh, he assured me today that he is a phone call away and, and I can assure you, Armin, that, um, you will remain on my speed dial. So thank you for, on behalf of the administrative team, uh, thank you for everything. Thanks for, um, really, um. Your, your ongoing support and, and just always spot on advice. So thank you so much.
Thanks, appreciate it. Bronwyn?
Oh, thanks. Uh, I just wanted to echo, uh, Dr. O'Shea's thoughts and say thank you for, uh, being the chair. For the past year and a half or so, uh.
Didn't have a choice. Didn't somebody like sabotage me making you the chair?
No, no.
Yeah, I hear you. Thank you.
But you've put in a ton of time and that hasn't gone unnoticed by, uh, you know, people. It's very much appreciated. Uh, lots happened and you've been there to help, um, Marty or Tom or Sue or whatever was needed. It seemed like you were always, uh, unavailable to them and to the members of the committee, which we really appreciate. Um, I bothered you about a lot of stuff, but you were super helpful, which I, I'm very appreciative of. Um, and, uh, a couple of people I talked to, we were hoping maybe, obviously we can't meet right now, but maybe when we are allowed to meet. We can have a little gathering and thank you in person.
Thanks. Kathy Rosado? You're on mute Kathy Rosado.
No, she's not.
She's not.
Her speaker's not, her mic's not working.
Can you write it out?
Oh, thank you. That, I get that. Yeah. No, thanks, thanks to all of you. Um, you know, I, it's, you guys are great. I mean, you know, Ryan and, and Bronwyn, you know, starting off on a junior varsity with you guys. Um, and, and working that way, uh, but it, it's been great. Um, I appreciate you all. Uh, you know, I said this the last time I stepped off this board and they'll say it again. It's that people don't understand that, that, you know, uh, how the schools work, how, how great the teachers are, uh, how, how great the, you know. The administration is, the staff, how everybody gets along. But, uh, but I'm going to miss you all. And I said, like I said, I'm one phone call away and, uh, and then call me anytime you need me.
See you next time there's a reg- resignation, Armin. Thanks.
I'm not, no volunteering. All right. So do we have a, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Armin, Kathy, um.
Before you adjourn, let me, let me read Kathy's message was on behalf of the LEA. Thank you so much. Your support of staff through the transition out of tough times is greatly appreciated.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Technology, Kathy.
All right, motion.
So moved.
I move that the school committee adjourn the June second, twenty twenty school committee meeting.
Second, motion second. Call for a roll call, uh, Bronwyn.
Oh, Armin can't leave, you know.
Yes.
Uh, Gianna?
I was thinking that Marty, so, but I have to, I have to say yes.
Kevin? Yes. Jamie?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yeah.
Ryan?
Yes.
Armin, yes. Good night, everybody. Thanks for coming.
Good night.
Thanks.
Thanks. Armin, you're the best.